Hi.
Oh, there's Debbie.
Hi Debbie.
Hi.
That's marvelous. Oh, you're so gracious to be here to listen to me present your data and information. That's exciting.
It's good to see everyone too. There's a lot of Glenwood people on here today.
Hi Stephanie.
Oh, Jack and.
Hi Stephanie.
Hi, how are you doing? Good to see you.
Welcome.
Good, yeah, welcome too. So glad you joined us for some historical data on the Glenwood. You know what's enjoyable too is to see more people now enjoying the Glenwood who previously didn't really have an interest in it are now more interested in being there and seeing what a beautiful place Scotts Valley has.
And that parking lot there, I've gone up there, I take friends with me from Santa Cruz and they like to go there and they say it's so amazing that there's this beautiful, beautiful park just on the edge of the city.
Yes, it is miraculous to tell you the truth. It's wonderful.
Well, I hear it's part of the miracle actually Stephanie.
Well, it took a it took a lot of effort from, I say a core 25 people who worked very, very diligently. So absolutely. You can never do anything by yourself in life. Everything has a a contribution for other people who care and love you. So, so will George, will Dave tell us when we're supposed to start?
Yep, we were just stalling there for a moment Stephanie to see if we could get a few more people on.
Okay.
There are 20 folks with us at the moment and George, I think we probably could go ahead and get started if you're ready.
Yeah, I'm ready. We haven't had any new people sign on for a few minutes. So I think we've probably got most of our audience. And it's so great. I see so many faces and people like, there's Linda and Karen.
Oh, hi Katie.
So anyway, we'll catch up later, but I will start by telling you about Senior Life Online. We're presented by Scotts Valley Senior Life Association. We're a 501(c)(3) nonprofit community benefit organization for the benefit of the health and education of local senior citizens. And you can find us on scottsfellieseniorlife.org. And today's featured speaker is Stephanie Egler talking about the history of the Glenwood. You can visit our website or and you can sign up for our newsletter. You can suggest future projects. You can find us on Facebook. And donations are always welcome. They're tax deductible. Donations directly benefit senior citizens around Scotts Valley. We're an all volunteer group of seniors and we're always looking for new members. So if anybody's interested, just contact us after the meeting. And one of the projects that we're proud to support is a new cultural arts center that is nearing completion. I think we just took a look at it a couple of days ago and Dave's Dave is very involved in that also. He's the treasurer of the group that's putting that together. And they're hoping to open by April. So we'll see, but it's, it's really impressive. And if you'd like to do, you can do a virtual tour if you go to our YouTube channel. And we did a tour there with Robert Aldana and it was a lot of fun. This presentation will be recorded for possible later viewing on our Scotts Valley Senior Life website. And by attending this in sessions, you're, you're consenting to be recorded. If you don't want to be recorded, you can disable your video feed. I see some people have done that. And there's a way to conceal your phone number. I don't see anybody's phone number. So I think we're safe. Today's topics will be the origins of the Glenwood and how it remained undeveloped for so long. The Glenwood Estates and Golf Course Proposal, A New Vision for the Glenwood, Back to the Drawing Board and the Glenwood Today. And as I mentioned before, following that, we're going to prob, we'll go through a few more slides, photographs supplied by Sue and also Paul Norcutt was generously provided photographs. So we'll look through those and then we can talk about any questions you might have. So with that, I will turn it over to Stephanie.
Ah, thank you, George. I appreciate it.
Do we need to make Stephanie a guest host Dave? Or are we good to go?
Uh, we're good to go. All set.
Oh, it sounds like a rocket launch.
Shall I do a countdown for you Stephanie?
I would like to be shot right now.
Actually, you know what? I will share my screen because I'm running the slideshow today.
Well, good afternoon and welcome everyone. I'm glad you could be with us today on to discuss a conversation on the history of the Glenwood. I'd like to begin by thanking our local published author Debbie Muth, who's on the call and for her extensive research and historical data regarding the Glenwood. I'll be presenting portions of her data and writings to provide you information on the history of the Glenwood. Debbie is an economics major from UCSC and is a certified real estate appraiser. And she is on the board of the Scotts Valley Historical Society and supports our local schools and scouting organizations. Now, I have to say, having had a really great business relationship with Debbie and also friendship, I want to express that I think it would be very wonderful if people would consider purchasing Debbie's book, The Images of America, Scotts Valley. And the book is only $20 and the profits go directly to the Scotts Valley Historical Society. And I'd love to read a quote on page 35 from Joseph, from Joseph Scott, who was interviewed about the early, early days of Scotts Valley. And he stated in his book, in his quote, "The open lands are valley, the open lands of the valley were virgin soil, horses and cattle roamed over the country in wild state." "It's not an uncommon sight for those early in the morning to find a half dozen grizzly bears feeding from the rank clover and the quail, they were numberless," end quote. "Although times have changed in Scotts Valley, the efforts of the Friends of Glenwood and the community, we were able to preserve a vast amount of the endangered species and beauty of the Glenwood." Today, I'm gonna, as George told you, I'll briefly go over the origins of the Glenwood and how it remained undeveloped. Glenwood Estates and Golf Course Proposal and the New Vision. Now, in this particular slide, you'll see that this was when we visited Sacramento and met with the California California Wildlife Conservation Board. And interestingly enough, prior to this particular meeting, I met individually with Fred Keely and Laura Perry, then the Director of the Santa Cruz Land Trust regarding the funding of purchasing a portion, if not all, of the Glenwood. So I'm going to continue with what the Glenwood history integrated. So there's a quote by John Gardner stating that the history never looks like history when you're going through it, living through it. And it's intriguing to me to think that we were living through historical times and that the Friends of Glenwood actually made history. On regarding the origins of how the Glenwood remained undeveloped for so long, it was once part of a Native American seasonal hunting and gathering grounds and was included in the Rancho San Augustine land grant and that form is much of the Scotts Valley Incorporated today. And after buying the parcel from his brother, George Edwin Scott and his wife Anna Baker established a dairy and the site remained in production until 1966. However, in 1945, Donald Santos purchased a dairy from George Scott's granddaughter, Edith Harrington. And Santos was also a businessman and community volunteer in Scotts Valley. He was also at one time mayor along with serving on the Scotts Valley School District and Scotts Valley Water Board. The dairy remained operational from 1966 and it was later annexed into the city in 1969. City officials weren't really sure what they wanted to see at that location other than some type of residential housing. What happened was in 1969, Don Santos sold a lease auction to the acreage, acreage to MADL Associates. The developers, interestingly enough, proposed a high-rise apartment complex, a golf course and professional and commercial buildings. The development was estimated increase the population of the city of Scotts Valley from 6,000 to 8,000 people. However, nothing really came of the proposal or a subsequent proposal in 1984, which included high density or medium density housing project and a mobile home park. Now we'll go on to the Glenwood Estates and Golf Course Proposal. After Don Santos and his operation of the dairy seat, he sold the Glenwood property to Norville Owala. Mr. Bill Owala was unfortunately unable to secure approval for his proposed development and became overextended. And the property subsequently went into foreclosure. The new owners, Brusa Corporation and investment firm from the Netherlands and their project managers, APC International submitted several informal plans for the large golf course and development before they settled on a final proposed project. The project amenities at that time were to include a 66 par 18 hole golf course and a clubhouse, a meeting facility, 210 single family homes, 66 hound houses. And there were six proposed ponds, two were for water storage and three of them were for something wonderful to look at. On the total site, the golf course and clubhouse would take up 168 acres of the Glenwood. 107 of the acres would be residential uses and roads and the remaining 50 acres, mostly hillside and repairing areas were to be preserved for open space and picnic areas. But what's interesting is they needed an additional 28 acres to complete their golf course. So they would be doing what they, what they did is they, in fact, went to the local, I'm sure you're all familiar with it, Camp Redwood Glen, a Salvation Army camp for youth and to purchase the additional property for the additional five hole golf course. Now, this site would require about 60, 65% of the site required approximately six acres of wetland habitat being filled and estimated 50 to 81,000 square feet of riparian habitat would be impacted. The, the EIR that they had for this particular project didn't conform to what Scotts Valley's policy of the policy was titled 21.2.3 Scotts Valley General Plan. And that's general plan. It's, it said that we, the city would protect our riparian corridors. However, despite the general plan policy and the warnings stated, the city of Scotts Valley council approved the golf course project. Then what happened at this point is the environmental concerns that the people had regarding this development were taken notice by the Resource Defense Fund and with the support of the California Native Plant Society and the Santa Cruz Regional Group of the Sierra Club, they filed suit against the city of Scotts Valley. And the project developers charging that the EIR and the proposed nature preserve were actually inadequate to protect the endangered species. Celia Scott Vandermeul, Attorney for the Resource Defense Fund, stated that the biotic work is so fundamentally flawed, we just couldn't leave it at the county level. And now at this time, the Scotts Valley spine flower was not federally listed, nor was the Aloney Tiger Beetle. So that came a little bit later. And what occurred was there was an out of court settlement in 1992 from the state attorney general's office mandating a new biotic report and additional information that would be paid for by the developers. And these additional studies were completed after which the Scotts Valley City Council once again approved the project. Now it appeared the only barrier that the developer had was the gaining the 28 acres of the outside of the city of Scotts Valley from the Camp Redwood Glen Salvation Army. The county, they went and formally applied to the county of Santa Cruz for the additional holes for the golf course. And even before, you know, it's interesting, even before the city of Scotts Valley became incorporated in 1966, the relations between the city of Scotts Valley and the county were a bit rocky and I'm sure people are familiar with that. And the Scotts Valley had caused issues regarding their Sky Park Airport, the library services, sewer and wastewater discharge, and also concern regarding the discharge from the golf course of chemicals into the riparian area. Well, anyway, on a three to one vote with one extension, the County Planning Commission denied the request for the permit for the additional five holes. And a subsequent meeting of the County Board of Supervisors also denied that request. And then in 1994, the Scotts Valley spine flower was federally endangered place, was placed on the federally endangered species list. And the new designation for the spine flower created a more requirements level regulations by the government for this particular type of development. So then trying to salvage a portion of the project and the monies that they spent, Brusa proposed 16 housing, 60 housing units and also a they, well, they, they didn't have approved, well, okay, let me start that over. In 69, 1994, 60 housing units and take 10 acres of the Glenwood were, had no environmental concerns. It's more like on the alluvial fill of the property. So what they did is they, that particular development was not actually approved by the city because it didn't have a a clear and formal detailed development agreement. Now it's interesting, at this point, it was 1994, I actually was contacted by Brusa to look at this particular development to see if I was in favor of it. But fortunately, at that time, I was not yet on city council. So I did not have an opportunity to really have any input on it. So later on, he put through another request for a shorter 18 hole golf course. And what happened is it was later pulled and the property was foreclosed upon. So at that point, the new owners of the Glenwood were Credit Lionaise Bank of the Netherlands. Now that bank looked for new ways to develop the Glenwood. And this is when I come to the portion of new vision for the Glenwood. Well, that new vision is what a group of us here had experienced is that after the foreclosure, Lionaise contacted a local developer by the name of Charles Chuck Keenan and saw the possibilities of Glenwood and entered into a purchase agreement with Brusa and Ashington California Corporation that was set up by Union Bank. When Keenan was asked about the concerns to his Glenwood project, Keenan stated to Santa Cruz Sentinel, quote, "I don't look at any of it as particularly daunting. It's just a process," end quote. Now, in April of 1996, I was sworn in onto the Scotts Valley City Council. And at the same time, Keenan presented his plan for the development on the Glenwood. In the initial proposal, not to, now totally within the limits of the city of Scotts Valley, it would be called the Woodbrook and it had 241 homes, a horse barn, riding holes and the horse barn and riding trails and corral were dropped from plans. And of course, it didn't have a golf course at this time. It was totally eliminated. And if approved, the Woodbrook would be the largest housing development in Scotts Valley over our 30 year history at that time. And to make his development proposal more enticing to the residents and the officials of Scotts Valley, Keenan proposed many additional benefits going beyond the normal requirements for the city. Now, I remember this very vividly because I used to call it legalized bribery, but that was just my perspective, but that's what they call them enticements. And they included connecting all homes in the development to recycle water, connecting three of the parks, city parks to recycle water and also the two elementary schools, which actually have occurred at this time anyway. And he also looked at the possibility of injection wells at the Glenwood to see if it would be feasible to recharge the water. They would also give $2 million to the school district for impact fees. That would be twice the amount that the state of California required and donating five more acres of property to Sultan and Park. Also along with construction improvements to the park and four and a half miles of multi-use public trails and dedicating 134 acres of open space to the city. And they also integrated a process where they would reconfigure the well-known intersection there at 17 for entering off the 17 and exiting the 17 there at the Glenwood and Scotts Valley Drive. Additionally, they were adding funding over the required amount for the city of Scotts Valley's police department. Well, despite the additional public enticements that the developer added, the proposed homes would mean a significant loss of wildlife habitat. And additionally, it would have a fragmented, shall I say, a wildlife corridor. There we're going to remove 659 trees. And although some mitigation measures seem inadequate, they also looked at the Aloney Tiger Beetle, which was later placed on the endangered species list. In a 1996 opinion column in the Scotts Valley Banner, it's interesting that it was sent in by then mayor Joe Miller and he's, he says, quote, "Losing the Glenwood, this will prove to be a very unpopular development. People will forget the amenities provided us as carrots. And when it is built, it will be used as a bad example of how the city council lets anything in town. Everything does not have to be stripped away to make way for development," end quote. And Miller was later on to change his mind and he signed his name to a letter in which 11 former mayors of Scotts Valley and they asked the voters to vote yes on a scaled down development. And in addition to these habitat, habitat concerns, he felt that they, the city would lose our community character and would provide an issue of destruction of wetlands, urban sprawl and the grading and long-term effects of the services by the new residents that were needed for the Glenwood development. You know, it's interesting as Keenan appeared to be unconcerned about the controversy surrounding the project. And when he was asked about the possible effects of the development on the Aloney Tiger Beetle, he said, quote, "It's probably the most common bug in the world" and was getting its own park, which I thought was pretty cute. Well, the local reaction to the new development plan was swift and the former members of Citizens for Responsible Growth and also the Friends of Glenwood and the Safe Scotts Valley Political Action Committee worked together. And they were aided by Jeff Ringel, a part-time environmental consultant. And these groups worked together and combined forces and began sending out mailers and going door to door and lobbying officials and decision makers as they challenged the development. So now what's interesting at this point to me is I said I was going to integrate my perspectives on this. I was contacted at the beginning of this particular process when this new vision for the Glenwood came forward by a young man by the name of Michael Honeck and his spouse Wendy Grace asking me what I felt would be appropriate for the Glenwood. And having been working for my master's degree at the time at San Jose State, I had taken a course in geology and what I found there was the alluvial fill was a perfect place for possibly 50 houses. This was just my guess because that's what I thought could fit on that alluvial portion down by Sultan and Park next to the Glenwood Drive. So I think it's kind of ironic that I thought 50 houses would be appropriate. Of course, he didn't think anything should be there and I thought that was a good idea, but I didn't know how we as a community would be able to afford to purchase the Glenwood. So what we did is we worked to try to find a mechanism in which to, in fact, purchase the Glenwood while we were going through this process. So although we were never a large group in number, we worked very diligently to, in fact, try to save the Glenwood. And over time, the groups came to believe that the best course of action would in fact be to purchase the remaining undeveloped property. And at that time, when I was on city council about, we received about 669 pre-printed comment letters that were mailed to the city council in Scotts Valley against the project. And the city also had many, shall I say contentious and lively planning commission meetings and city council meetings that lasted well into the evening. It stays with you for the rest of your life, but it was wonderful to see the integration of people's perspectives on saving the Glenwood and others that wanted to, in fact, build on the Glenwood. What was interesting in response to, shall I say, okay, in response to the concern that the project had, people asked Keenan what he thought of what we were facing. And he said, Keenan stated, "This project will not go away. It is not a matter of waving a magic wand and having it be a pasture and, and save the day. That's not how it works in America," end quote. Obviously, other community members were more focused on the amenities that were the developer was proposing. And then on November 12th of 1998, a And then on November twelfth of nineteen ninety-eight, a modified project was approved by the city council on a three-two vote uh, with myself as mayor uh, against, and Aisworth was also against the project. And then council members Randy Johnson, Bart Cavallero, and Chuck Walker voting in support of it. In the final approval product, approved project, the number of homes proposed had been reduced from two hundred and seventy-six to a hundred and forty-five homes with a hundred and fifty acres to be left as permanent open space. Uh, now with the council approval of the project complete, the Friends of Glenwood fought on. And within thirty days, they collected enough signatures to place the development on a special elected election ballot. And this was the first time in city history that a land use decision had been placed on the ballot for a referendum. And that same year in nineteen ninety-eight, American Dream, the development company that Keenan um, company uh, uh, formed, actually received four point two million dollars for a twenty-two acre parcel located in the southwestern acre, uh, acre area of Glenwood. And that was through eminent domain and it was for the Scotts Valley High School. The developer um, at that point rented a local office and vigorously campaigned to get voter approval of the Glenwood project. Uh, and all the developers spent about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars uh, in, uh, on the referendum and we spent about fifty on Save Scotts Valley. Let me see. So uh, on, let me see, I'm looking for the date of the, the uh, election results, but it was interesting that um, the Santa Cruz Editorial Board and the Scotts Valley Banner urged a no vote on the development. And Assembly Member Keeley uh, publicly pledged to preserve the Glenwood should the voters turn down the development. And I had the privilege of working um, with Fred Keeley and the Wildlife Conservation Board and meeting with them with Laura Perry up in Sacramento. And he was asking us to give us a, Laura Perry to provide a clear descriptive of all the environmentally sensitive habitat and species at the Glenwood so that he could formulate a better presentation to the Wildlife Conservation Board on the preservation of the Glenwood. So um, I'm gonna move on to um, the election day of June nineteen ninety-nine in a record turnout when the final vote was tallied, Measure O was defeated sixty-point-four percent, two thousand two hundred and eighty-six votes to one thousand four hundred and ninety-nine. And the company Measure P was also defeated by sixty-point-nine percent with two thousand two hundred and ninety-four votes to one thousand four hundred and seventy-four votes. And I'd like to put in a little uh, information here. Uh, I remember um, the Scotts Valley Banner editor at the time. I forgot his name. Oh, but uh, that's it, that's it, Jeff Frazier. And uh, he came up to the podium uh, before the council meeting started and he asked me, uh, how did I think the vote was gonna go? And it happened to be at that time, I was taking a statistics class at San Jose State. And I did a um, a sampling of everybody that I went door-to-door and I would vote, I would write down who was for and who was against it. And then the undecideds, I give, I gave a point five to one side and a point five to the other to make it one vote. And I told them I had done the stats and we would win two to one. And sure enough, that's pretty close to what happened. So it was kind of nice to um, do a random sampling through my walking door-to-door, as did other people, to understand what the end results would be. So uh, with the defeat of the polls, uh, the developer had to wait another year before a new project for the Glenwood could be approved. And at this point, state and local officials, along with residents, started looking for ways uh, to finance a purchase of the remainder of the Glenwood. Under terms of Proposition Twelve of State Funding, uh, State Funding Bond passed in two thousand and three, uh, five million was to be earmarked for a certain type of property, not specified, but describing property similar to the Glenwood. Okay, then what happened is Keenan went back to the drawing board. And in two thousand and one, uh, his development team now proposed three different alternative sites uh, for sixty-five homes on eighteen acres. Later that year, uh, this new project was modified to forty-nine homes. And it was approved by the city council on a three-to-two vote with Randy Johnson and Cheryl Anzler and Paul Marigonda in favor and council members Cliff Barrett and myself uh, against it. Uh, once again, the Scotts Valley, uh, Safe Scotts Valley collected enough signatures to place a project on the ballot. And unlike the last election, both the Santa Cruz Sentinel and Scotts Valley Banner urged a yes vote for the reduced development. And on election day, Measure M uh, passed one thousand eight hundred and twenty-four votes to one thousand seven hundred and fifty-six votes. So um, they won by sixty-eight votes. So what we see here is uh, that we needed to do further planning for the proposed open space uh, s- saving that open space. So uh, local supporters and officials were eager to see if the state would allocate money for all of the or a portion of Glenwood. And on May fourteenth, two thousand and three, a group of approximately twenty of us, I think you have that uh, picture, uh, George. Um, we went to Sacramento and the committee and went to the committee hearing. And with, with the Wildlife Conservation Board not accustomed to having large crowds there, we were item agenda number thirty-five. And they uh, moved us to a, a item number one, which allowed us to uh, present our um, request to the Wildlife Conservation Board. What was wonderful is Hannah Levy, a local uh, grade schooler from Scotts Valley, was one of several speakers to uh, address the Wildlife Conservation Board. And she said, quote, "Beautiful place with wildlife. If we were to build houses, the wildlife would probably disappear." And later that day, later that same day, the Wildlife Conservation Board appropriated three point one-three million in bond money for the Glenwood Open Space. I guess you can say we were very elated to hear that. Uh, with now some funding assured, uh, we were uh, able to um, look at possibly uh, getting additional funding so that we could manage and pay for the management of the con, of the um, Glenwood. At a two thousand and three city council meeting, a one, one point six-two acre uh, opportunity lot uh, from the project was proposed, which was to be deemed, deeded to the city of Scotts Valley. And then the opportunity lot was appraised by the state of California. And, and it was um, sold to the Santa Cruz Land Trust with the proceeds going into the fund for the management of the open space. Uh, I was really interested when I was at city council, we were going through these meetings. I remember Randy Johnson speaking of uh, this opportunity lot. And I was wondering, you know, I don't really think that's necessary, but in the long run, it turned out to be of great benefit to us to, in fact, be able to uh, preserve the Glenwood. And the developer also sold five lots on Tabor Drive to the city. That brought a total number of homes down to forty-four. And that same year, the Glenwood Open Space Management Plan received final city approval. And under the arrangement by the, with the home builder, who now was Ponderosa Homes, and they would manage it for the hundred and seventy acres for a five-year period. And the construction on the homes started in two thousand and three. And in two thousand and five, they were finished building the homes. So after the five years were up, then it went to the um, Land Trust of Santa Cruz County to, in fact, manage a conservation easement of the Glenwood. And this is the best part. And this is why I get to, it would be nice to hear from the Glenwood people is that the Glenwood today um, were able to enjoy both the west side, the high school and the east side portions of the Glenwood with trails. And there's no doubt that the courage and perseverance of the Friends of the Glenwood and Safe Scotts Valley made a huge difference in the well-being and life of Scotts Valley. We both lived through and made history. I think it's with their hard work and the assistance of numerous supporters, our citizens, Fred Keeley, Laura Perry, and the Land Trust of Santa Cruz County, we are able to enjoy and be blessed by this open space. And now I'd like to open it up for questions and discussion. Thank you.
Anyone wishes to speak, make sure you unmute yourself and speak right up.
I would like to say something first. It's so nice to see you, Stephanie.
Oh, Carol.
So much for giving us the background and the history of what happened. I drive by the Glenwood every day and I look at that parking lot and I love seeing how many people are using that preserve every day. It is wonderful. It was worth all the time that we spent working to preserve it. And I cannot thank you and Cliff Barrett enough for guiding us through that process and helping that preservation occur. Thanks very much.
Oh, thank you, Carol. You also helped me a great deal with uh, legal issues and understanding um, complexities of that. Thank you too for all your hard work. There's gotta be somebody else that wants to say something, right?
Well, I would like to say something. I um, listening to your so, oh, so articulate and, and comprehensive and, and important recounting of all of the um, many details, as many as you could fit in in what a twenty-minute talk, uh, really um, helps to wrap our arms around that whole process. It was, it was, well, how many years? Twelve years? Fifteen years? It seemed like forever. But I um, I am not a politician, as you know, and I um, or may know. But I have um, a passion for nature. And I, the time that I put into this with the other ones in the group, maybe about twenty-five of us, it was said. To me spoke of the deep need and, and desire need, emotional and spiritual need for us human beings to have nature in our lives. And we, we just have to hang on to that. It, the world would be completely paved over. And sure, this developer, he was doing what he thought was his job. His attitude was terrible. The first time I met him, uh, he took the, the community group, about thirty, thirty-five of us on a tour of the land. And afterwards, I spoke with him and I said, you know, Mr. Keenan, I don't think this is gonna fly with this um, city. Um, it doesn't seem, I think it's way too much of a development. And he looked at me kind of sternly, says, um, Sue, I, I've never lost a project and I won't lose this one. If you don't like what I'm gonna do here, sell your house. That set a tone for me for the next fifteen years or whatever it was. I, I don't resent him. I think he's just misguided. I mean, he owns half of Palo Alto, I understand. So anyway.
Thank you for your comments. I just want to say that I have to give credit for the detailed historical data to Debbie Muth, our local published office. She is amazing. She provided this data and collected this data and wrote the information down in a wonderful paper regarding Glenwood. So, and also thank you for allowing us and opening your home for our many meetings. And not only, it was such a, it's kind of like a, it was more like a, a session of uh, joy to be there in your home and working on the Glenwood. Thank you.
All, good job. Well done.
So I, I'd like to say something.
Hi, Linda.
Hi, everybody. I, I see a, a quite a good representation from the Friends of Glenwood group. And um, I wanna give a shout out. So George and I, along with the Van Brogans, I see Nick uh, here. And then the person that has to be represented, even though she's not here, is Laura Ann Dapper. She was a force of nature when it came to organizing our group. And George and I were her, her neighbors at the time. Uh, we lived next to Laura Ann, right on Glenwood Drive. And those little, there's a little stretch of houses there right before you get to the high school on the left side of Glenwood as you're driving up. So we lived literally adjacent to the Glenwood and then the Van Brogans backed up against it. And uh, Laura Ann, I can remember, so the Dappers and George and I both had small, small children at the time, like uh, not even in school yet when this all started. And you know, we're busy and, you know, working and she would come through the gate with a stack of flyers. "Oh, Linda, could you please like stamp these?" And like, you know, we were, we really truly were a grassroots, just group of citizens who were determined to save the Glenwood. And, you know, and, and it went on and on and on for years and years. And the group of people that came together, you know, even though we've all sort of spread out over the years, I mean, some people are still living in their same properties, but many of us aren't. And you know, like, I'll just never forget the energy and the commitment and the passion that the group had to see this through. And, you know, and eventually we succeeded. And, you know, as Sue was just talking about, and, and so was Carol about, you know, driving along Glenwood now and seeing that, you know, land preserved forever for the, you know, citizens that, you know, aren't even born yet. And the beautiful trails, which I've been on, unfortunately, not as much as I would like. And I just wanna salute everybody in our group and, you know, those of us here. But, you know, we, we, we made a difference and it really feels good. And I'm really enjoying this presentation. So thank you, Stephanie, for walking us through it.
Thank you, Linda. You know, I also want to say it was wonderful uh, to also go to uh, Jim and Margot Hobers' home and also uh, spend time there uh, in trying to get the Glenwood saved. I remember them very vividly too. And I don't know if you remember Sarah Riegler, she had those two little boys.
Yes.
And she had the stroller and we would walk, she was walking door-to-door with two little people in tow. It was wonderful. Thank you, Linda.
Yeah.
Hi, everyone.
To say something, Carolyn. I, I, I can't see the gallery view, so I can't see myself. It's weird.
I, yeah, same here.
I switched to gallery. Let's see. No. But anyway, thank you, everyone. I've been here since eighty-six and raised both my boys and know a few of you here. And um, yeah, I'm so happy when I see the Lupin still here. I do miss the water rushing by, you know, and I'm up in um, the Western Road area. And uh, actually, I just wanted to say too, that the, wasn't mentioned, the Santa Margarita Aquifer would have been way more impacted, which a lot of us, most of us rely on, especially uh, got our own wealth. But um, also uh, some other good news. We need good news. One of um, probably one of the longest residents still alive here, she's ninety-eight. Um, she probably, she's so humble with the wannabe anonymous, but she donated close to, I think, three hundred, just off the top of my head, to Land Trust and also Conservatory, another three hundred before she, she wanted to make sure that was accomplished before she moved on to green pastures. And um, so the good news is that they're actually, she was a big part of her donation to create the wildlife her donation to create the Wildlife Tunnel. And we're starting that. It's actually gonna be starting in production now, which is gonna save so many mountain lions and um people who uh that they try to cross and people hit um every year, um, close to nine, twelve. So that's great news. And so like Linda said, grassroots, people doing the grassroots to keep this pres- beautiful place preserved. And I applaud everyone that that had a hand in that. So thank you.
Thank you, Carolyn. Hey, Nick, are you in there anywhere? I guess.
Hello, hello.
Hi, Nick. I just had to say hello and.
Oh. Yeah, I, I, yeah, I wanted to say that if I could too. Um, you know, there, it was such a small group of, I think people mentioned twenty, twenty-five people, maybe thirty times. And we did an awful lot and it's you mentioned him earlier, but I think the one indispensable the component, the, the thing, we wouldn't have been successful without Michael Honeck. And any one of us could have maybe dropped out, whatever, but without the financial backing that we got from him, uh, I don't, I, we, we wouldn't have succeeded. So I, I don't know if there's any way to honor him, but and I, I have no contact. I, you know, I haven't heard from him in twenty years, but I think he was indispensable part of it of our success, so.
Yeah, Nick, I think the way we honored, are honoring him is that, that Glenwood is there.
Absolutely, yeah. And it, I mean, it's, I was up on the East Glenwood this morning and I was on the West Glenwood a couple of days ago, so um, I go a lot and it's, yeah, and I took some friends from Santa Cruz that had not been up to East Glenwood today and they just, they were pretty just shocked. They kept, we come to Viewpoint and they'd say, "Look at the view and look at this." And you know, the Lupin's already coming up in places. So they were super impressed, so. And it's, you know, you don't expect people from Santa Cruz to make the journey to Scots Valley, but I live near that parking lot on Glenwood Drive and there are days in that parking lot is full. So we've got people from outside our community coming for this trip.
Yeah, another element that's really wonderful is that it's also used as a science, um, in informational science area for the schools so that they can learn about the biotics and insects uh uh at Glenwood. That's also wonderful.
Yes, yeah. I see the kids out there squatting in the morning dew. So anyway, yeah, that's, that's the main thing I wanted to say. It's it's been, it's wonderful to finally have it and it was a long, long wait, you know, that, that's been the long time to get it open, but it's worth it.
Thank you, Nick. I thank you for your contributions over the years. Very important. I, I just received the other day um an email from the Land Trust of Santa Cruz County. And um they, she was telling me that there uh is great reason to celebrate again. Exploring New Horizons, a local outdoor education school recently moved in next door to Glenwood Preserve. Exploring New Horizons mission is to empower students, build teamwork and teach environmental literacy and stewardship. And that goes on, but this was just a dream of mine. I always wanted a nature study area, a building or something on the high school campus, maybe. So this is, this is just complete.
Great news. Hey, Katie, was that a picture of you and your family at the Glenwood?
I don't know. I might have missed it.
Oh, okay.
Um, I, I, I wanted to um talk about the legacy of the Glenwood and yes, we were all so young. It's kind of fun to, I mean, maybe I did see myself and I don't recognize myself as a young person anymore. But um it's the, the, when you think about the kids, the Dapper Boys, the Riddler Boys, the Bagley Boys, and they're not boys anymore. They're all young adults. And um I'm right there. Oh, yeah, that's me.
Yeah. Yeah.
And there you are, by the white dog.
Oh, yes. And I think that's me up, up by the tree doing this. Um, so yeah, the kids are, we left them this wonderful legacy and now they're the young adults that are um spearheading the, you know, movement of conservation. And um I'm so proud to, of my um son Kevin, who is a professional engineer and his specialty is hydrology. And so he's already been out on both sides of the Glenwood. We're working with Land Trust um to alleviate some of the drainage issues that the Glenwood has had over the years. So here's this little boy that I made, I made go door to door knocking or holding signs at street corners. And, and now he's working professionally on the Glenwood. And he, he's very proud of that fact too, that, you know, the Glenwood has been such a part of his life um through the years. So I just, and my other shout out, I think we need to acknowledge the um Santa Cruz County Mi- Mountain Biking Association.
Yes.
For doing all the trail work um on the Glenwood. Um, that it's amazing trails. Um, I enjoy them every week and, and and I don't think they're present in this Zoom meeting to um today. But um they deserve a lot of credit for their work there.
Here, here.
And even though uh see, ju- even though we had our doubts about sharing the trails with the uh biking community.
It's the best.
I have not experienced, I'm there every week and um I have not had any bad experiences with the, the um mountain bikers.
I, I don't think you will because I think they love it and enjoy it as much as we do. So, hey, Jack and Lisa, I saw you uh starting to chat.
I wanted, I wanted to, to uh say the same thing that Katie just did. The paths are so wonderful and so great to walk on. And I also wanted to say that as a person who uses the park, but was not part of creating this amazing place, it's great to hear the history and how many legal and political entities you had to work with and keep on going when you were turned down and stuff. And as a, I guess maybe as a teacher-y type comment, the signage is great. It really, I love the sign at the beginning that talks a little bit about the history of how it was created. And then when you're going on the trail, the, the red trail, the blue trail, the gold, it really helps you find your way. So sometimes parks neglect to make that easy for hikers and whoever did it did a great job.
Yeah, good navigation. I think though Land Trust did a great, uh, great job in uh directing you in the, the right way. I agree. Anybody else?
High school cross-country team also has never had trails like most of their competitors.
Yeah.
Would run up Glenwood, which isn't safe, all the way up to Seventeen and Summit. And uh so those of you didn't know, they, they finally have some trails now too.
Excellent.
I'd like to say something um about the photos. I think all of us, even in this presentation, have seen what a difference they've made. And they were done largely by Sue Krebert and Paul Norcutt, both of him, whom did just fantastic um photos. And I think that helped us in showing people in the future and also for preserving what it is today.
Is that Mar- is that Margot?
Yeah.
Hiding.
Oh, 'cause I didn't see your picture.
Oh, I know. I'm not sure. I must have shut myself out here somewhere. But anyway, uh, the pictures were terrific and I
Thank you.
With almost like an advertising scheme that they made such a difference to people when they could really see it.
There's the grandfather oak. Now it fell, it's finally fallen, but it, it was a wonderful, wonderful tree for all many decades.
Yeah, Margot, thank you. Thank you so much for opening your home for our many meetings along with Sue. It was a was almost like a great therapy session while we were.
Yes, it was. And there were many, many people involved to really put their hearts and souls into it.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Well, is there anybody else that would like to make comment or discuss anything?
Well, we should, we should get together on a hike.
Here, here.
Yes.
Hey, Debbie, are you still there? Oh, okay, she's not there. She's at the aquarium. Well, thank you for, to everyone for your incredible uh work and integration into making this uh beautiful place possible and for the many people that contributed uh the hours, the time, the love and the passion to preserve this place in Scots Valley. And our region will certainly enjoy this for um forever, forever, I hope, and for our children's children. Thank you.
Thank you. I hope this recording will be down at the library.
You'll find it on the Senior Life Association website.
Thank you, Dave.
Yeah. We'll post.
Really appreciate your organization and what it does.
Great.
Thank you, Stephanie.
Stephanie, this was wonderful. Thank you so much for putting this together.
Okay.
Thank you.
Enjoy your grandkids.
Thank you.
George, you wanna wrap it up?
Yeah, thanks a lot for coming, everybody. I do hope. I'm looking forward to getting together with everybody. So let's do that soon.
Yes.
So tune in March seventh. Our featured speaker will be Christie Best, who does Clutterbug. And she'll talk about decluttering and downsizing one's home. So tune in and um sign up for our newsletter and we'll send out all kinds of information, links to our previous programs and um we'll stay in touch. So thank you all for coming.
Thank you, George. Goodbye.
Participating. Appreciate it.
Heart, heartwarming.
Thank you. Bye, Dave. Take care.
You.
Bye-bye.
Bye, bye.
Bye, everybody.